Good evening. I call the City Council Meeting Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Gripp as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for tonight.
Arden?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reiners? Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch? T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
You present, Your Honor?
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. A reminder for the folks in here, if you'd please be kind enough to put your cellphone on silent or turn it off, it simply doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, any specific item, please be recognized by the chair, come to the podium, the microphone's above you, love to know your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. We ask that everybody please observe it, and I know you all will. The comma accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity and good taste, and when you're addressing the council, please address us as a body and same with the staff. Thank you very much. Ms. Merritt, is any city administrator update tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have six, five, six, public hearings this evening, two under community development and four under Public Works. First two are under community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead those. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items on community development public hearing this evening. I open the public hearing on the annual action plan for year 50 for the CDBG and home programs. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport. I didn't get a chance to read everything about this, community development block grants and the home programs. I just want to say that I've been doing a lot of research lately, and you'll be hearing about that later, but not much money from the city of Davenport ever goes into poor home buyers. A lot of poor people do try to buy homes, and essentially, the city of Davenport has zero assistance for them and an extraordinary hostility and overtaxation. And I wish that more of this money was somehow being directed to the bottom half and not seeming to all go to the top half, and that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Judith Lee, second ward. A lot of my comments tonight are going to be about the lack of information that is provided to the public. I don't know what you folks get, but we get nothing. This says it's a long document, you can go to the library, you can go online. It's not that hard to make a summary of the key points for you as well as for the public. One of the things that I was always concerned about while I was on council was how much of this information goes to city staff for administration. If I remember right, a lot of it does. So I would really like to start requesting that more information be available to the public. A summary would be great. You always had a table on what types of projects were being done and what type of money was going to that for the CDBG, and I would like to request that for the public because there is not enough here to make informed comments for this public hearing. So I see this public hearing as a waste of your time and a waste of our time because there is not enough here to do the job that we need to do as oversight of the mayor and city council, the city administrator and staff as it relates to CDBG. So I make no comments because there is not enough information, and it's a waste of time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. I open the public hearing for case ROW 24-03, being the request of Davenport Community School District to vacate West Fifth Street between Cedar Street and Howell Street. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, and I want to speak against this primarily because I believe that the school district has been acting in an extraordinarily wasteful fashion, demolishing buildings that could have been easily converted into housing, a much-needed housing, and that they have so much money that they can spend on building new facilities that they are constantly knocking down perfectly good multimillion-dollar buildings and wasting extraordinary amounts of money. Both of the two buildings that were torn down recently by the school district could have been converted into housing, would have been pretty simple to do, and it's much needed. And I hate to see the school district waste millions of dollars and send tons and tons of perfectly good buildings to the landfill.
State your name and address or ward, please.
Jessica Knowles, I have to admit that as a student from Smart Elementary, or Smart Intermediate, and a parent, I believe that you guys should move forward with this because I have attended the meetings for this, and it looks like it's going to be a good safety net for our children.
Good evening, council. My name is Alex Christ. I'm a civil engineer working with IMEAG on the Smart project, so just wanted to let you know, if there are any questions, I'll be here to help answer questions regarding the site layout, site plans for the new Smart Middle School.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area is for public hearings is under Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four public hearings this evening. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West Third Street and West Fourth Street Telegraph Road to Fillmore Street Traffic Signal Upgrades Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
I'll go first again. I figured you wanted to go second, or I would have hesitated. Gary Eklund, I want to speak against this. This is related to the two ways. I briefly thought for a minute that the new people were going to stop this project that the most people are opposed to. This was a priority of the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce wanted us to go from having one ways that work. Now, if we were here 50 years ago and we had two-way streets and you said, hey, we want to make everything one ways, maybe 50 years ago, 60 years ago, 65 years ago, maybe, you know, it would have made sense to say, well, let's not go to one ways because everything's working. But the one ways work. Bread truck drivers, people from out of town, everybody knows they can follow these one ways this way and that way, and they can get across. I think this is going to make life safer or less safe for pedestrians. I think people downtown are going to be more likely to be hit by cars. There's going to be more accidents. I think this is an extraordinary waste of money. I think that the vote to convert to two ways was illegitimate. I think there was a person who should have recused herself, who voted.
Mr. Eklund, to be clear, this is for the traffic signals from Telegraph to Fillmore. I believe them are going to stay one way.
Well.
So it's for the traffic signals.
That's good.
Or replacing the traffic signals on the one way.
Part of the, part of the street system is going to remain one way.
Correct.
And then it'll convert to two-way, and then it'll convert to one way again. But I appreciate that, and I'm glad, I'm glad that maybe some of it will be sent. But I would encourage you as a Public Works person, I know they're talking about money this and money that, and somehow the staff, you know, like, oh, we would have to reapply, and we can't reapply. Better to spend millions of dollars doing what the Chamber of Commerce wants than risk some money doing what your people want. But I would encourage you as an older person who was here before, and the new people, however, whoever they may be, to do what the people of the city want and stop this stupid conversion to two ways that the Chamber of People, Chamber of Commerce wants and the people don't. So thank you.
Thank you.
Judith Lee, second ward. Once again, did any of you read the legal notice that was in the paper for this one and for the following public hearing? It just says there's going to be a public hearing and on the cost and necessity of the above project in the city of Davenport. So you go to the background information, and there's almost nothing. I'm sure you folks got more information, but once again, for the public, there's almost nothing. And what I've seen with this project over time is that it's been sliced and diced and broken up into different projects that overlap, but it's not clear, and fair enough to Mr. Eklund, it's not clear what's what as it relates to this project. Yes, I know this is part of the one way, and I know that one of the things we discussed was it'll extend probably over time. So he has a point. One of my concerns is that for you is that what's happening is through all this confusion with the public and through the votes we took at the end of December, and now they're adding on different parts and throwing different parts of this bigger set of projects that are all really one project with different components, is that in a way, you've been extorted. You cannot, whether you like the two ways or not, you can't vote against it, like I agree with you, sir, that they've tied it in to federal grants for part of it, to where if you voted no, apparently, you'll lose some of this money. And then what'll happen, since you don't want to lose the rehab, because lord knows it's needed, as well as the work underneath the street is needed for the lights and the conduits and all the other utilities from that old road, they're going to say, well, council voted on it. It's council. We remember that the original vote was five yes, the old guard, five no, and who broke the tie? Mayor Mattson. And since then, whether there's been, every time we've talked about it more, when I was on council and when I was not, because again, there was that last vote and the last meeting in December to make sure that you new folks did get a chance to vote on that two-way, they took care of it at the end of the air. And now they're bringing this in, and they're saying, well, council voted for it. Council did that. Not all the council did that. And now we're looking at some confusing parts of this overall project, and how it fits in, if you read the legal notice, there's no way to know. If you read the notice for the next one on the agenda, there is no way to know what this project is for us to even comment. Again, this is a waste of time for the public because you, as city administrator and staff, have not provided the information we need in order to be able to provide informed comments on this project and on the next one. So again, the way I see it is you folks have been extorted because I know it's tied into the funding that has now been fed into DOT and is happening very quickly. If you back up, the point is you'll lose money. This could have, just like with all the other things that could have been taken care of six months, eight months ago, here you are again, being put at the last minute into a vote that has poison pill in it because you want to support particularly the West End and fix their roads. But with that comes the rest of the projects. How this is all tied together, there's no way for us in the public to know, and I feel that that is malfeasance on the part of staff, management, and the mayor towards, towards the public. It's actually a lot of lack of compliance with the open meetings law because we are not provided with the information we need. You know I'm right, and it comes down to egregious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Second public hearings on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Third Street Telegraph Road to Harrison Street Rehabilitation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Gary Eklund, and I think this one says Telegraph Road to Harrison Street, so I think it does apply to the one ways. I just want to say again that this seems to be a done deal, even though there's, I think, a majority on the city council right now who, if they were starting fresh, would not do it, but they're going to make a bad decision because it's too late to stop. And I would encourage the people who've been in the newspapers saying that they've changed their mind from opposing it because it's too late to change their mind back again. You could change your mind two times, three times, four times. And I would encourage the gentleman who I'm not allowed to name, but who was in the newspaper saying that he was opposed to it and he is opposed to it, but they'll lose the money, so now he's in favor of it because he wants the street repairs. Okay, that makes sense. You want street repairs. But the people in the city of Davenport have been rolled over with this thing. I respect the Chamber of Commerce has a right to have, be lobbyists for hereditary millionaires and large corporations. They deserve that. And aspiring entrepreneurs who think it's a good idea to join. I remember a time where I, I went 25, 30 years ago to different chamber events, and, you know, in theory, you can network and promote your business and, you know, have additional opportunities through meeting people with money and contracts and available funds. I want to praise, actually, one of the new women on the city council. There was a vote recently regarding the Chamber of Commerce, and she said, I'm going to recuse myself. And, well, I'll be really fast. Let me, if you let me finish.
Stick to the item, please.
I promise to finish up in seconds. There was an original five-to-five vote. I believe that one of the people who voted in favor of it was required by law to recuse themselves and did not. And there's a one chance in a million, but I'm going to be reaching out to the Iowa Attorney General and to the U.S. Attorney General and ask them to set aside that five-to-five vote because a person who was required by law to recuse themselves didn't. And again, my praise for the young entrepreneur woman who honestly recused herself because she should recuse herself. Sometimes you should say, I have a conflict of interest, and I can't vote on this. Makes sense to me?
Next.
Judith Lee, second ward. Again, did any of you read the legal notice? The legal notice, as in the paper, is different, substantially different from what we have on our agenda for this public hearing. This hearing says, notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, and proposed contract for the Third Street pavement rehab project Telegraph Road to East River Drive. That is what is in your legal notice, published by the deputy clerk. June 10th, it says here, COL IA 200529. If you look at the agenda, it says, plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Third Street Telegraph Road to Harrison Street. This is a very different vote that you are putting forward tonight than what you put in the newspaper, the newspaper of relevance, of legal relevance. You can't vote on this. Either you correct the agenda or you correct the legal notice. But you cannot vote having an illegal legal notice that is not consistent with your agenda. It either goes to Harrison or it goes to River Drive. It can't do both with your vote tonight. So I request that this be withdrawn from the agenda, that a new public notice be put in, and that this come up again with more information from the public. This cannot be legally voted on tonight with such a substantive discrepancy between the legal notice in the paper and what's on the agenda. And again, there's not enough information for the public to even know what you're planning on doing because it doesn't even have the cost, scope of cost in here, or it does in, in the agenda. There's too many mistakes here for this to be voted on tonight. I ask you to withdraw it and do it correctly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East High Street and Forest Ward, Forest Road Storm Sewer Realignment Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Gary Eklund, I'll be super quick. This has the word sewer in it, and since I'm here, I have to protest the way that the sewers are funded, and the funding for all the sewers in the city of Davenport should be back, put back onto the property taxes. I'm currently doing some research into people who have lost their property due to excessive overtaxation by the city, and if someone's paying three times their property tax fare share, and then they have the sewer bills on top of it, it's even more likely to drive them into homelessness and to lose their home. And as a person who presides over the Public Works and the sewer departments, I'm encouraging you to figure out this year, next year, the year after that, how can the city of Davenport put the funding for the sewers back onto the property tax and also start to look at how to make the property taxes more accurately and fairly assessed. And that's all, just because it's sewers. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Blackhawk Creek Gate Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next series petition communications for members, any, please. Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give my colleagues a heads up for next Wednesday. We'll be adding an item for a noise variance ordinance that just because of some of the circumstances and timing with this week being a Tuesday, weren't able to get that on the agenda. And I thank our deputy city clerk, Brian Crupp, for helping getting that rolling, and Alderman Tim Dunn for seconding that. But just wanted to give a little notice to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a heads up that we will be having, the next party in the park will be Thursday, June 27th, not this Thursday. Thankfully, hopefully, it's cooler next week, 5:30 to 7:30. And that will be at Lindsay Park. That's the first time we will be having at Lindsay Park over in the Village, so I hope you can join us. I'd also like to wish everybody a very happy Juneteenth tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly.
Well, well. So Lindsay Park is in my neighborhood. Shout out to Fifth Ward. I want to talk about Juneteenth and the importance it is to me. Had a wonderful time at Juneteenth over the weekend. Had a bunch of places to be because they wanted to see me and take pictures of my beautiful face. No, I'm just kidding. But it was a really good time. If anybody got to get out and see these celebrations, the celebrations on the river, it was hot, but it was a really nice time. So I want to thank Tracy, TMBC, the city, the river, all the folks that were involved in making that celebration happen. And tomorrow, 3:00 at the MLK Center on the corner of Fifth and Brady, they will do their opening for their park. The building has been around for, it's been a minute, but the park has just been completed, and due to weather, they had to reschedule, so it'll be nice and toasty tomorrow. So me, the mayor, and Alderman Gripp are supposed to speak at this event tomorrow. So if you guys have nothing going on, come melt with us at 3:00 tomorrow afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take a minute to remember a former council person who passed away this, this weekend, if you didn't know. Former Alderman Gene Meeker passed away. He came to the city of Davenport in 1993 from Waterloo, and he was basically the executive director of what is now the Downtown Partnership. He worked there for, I think, close to 30 years, maybe a little bit more than 30 years before he retired. And then upon retirement, he became a, the Alderman at Large in Davenport. His, his big focuses were on economic development and the downtown, and he has a lot of projects that he was very proud of. I did get to work with him because he actually came back and served like half of a year when Jeff Justin, Alderman Justin moved down to Florida, and Gene graciously came back and served on the council for six months. But he is not a native Davenporter, but he really grew to love the city of Davenport, and he was a public servant, and he gave a lot of his life and time to the city of Davenport and trying to make it a better place. And for that, I'll always remember him. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. All right, seeing no one else, we'll move to the four areas of discussion, community development, public safety, public works and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have four items on the agenda this evening. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-02, being the request of the city of Davenport, Iowa, to vacate a portion of Lorton Place between Lorton Avenue and Lombard Court. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-03, being the request of Davenport Community School District to vacate West Fifth Street between Cedar Street and Howell Street. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving case F24-06, being the request of Fair Oaks LLC for a final plat of Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park 13th Edition, a two-lot subdivision on 31.5 acres located at 2951 Enterprise Way. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, and I'll try to be fast. I am 100% opposed to this. This is 31.58 acres in an industrial zone that previously was agriculture, our wildlife, and now it is industrial zone. We had an industrial zone down on Second Street that they decided to demolish, and we had a railroad tracks that came right by. They state-built railroad tracks to come out north. The city, for like 30, 40 years, had a policy pushed by city of people and chambers to use tax money, gazillions and gazillions of dollars of tax money, to promote northern sprawl and northern development, people who say we live in a free market. This is a monarch caterpillar eating milkweed. You've all heard how the city destroyed my milkweed, and this is 31-plus acres of either farmland or natural land, which is going to be paved over largely at taxpayers' expense by people who tell us, people who work for $7.25 an hour, more or less, that we live in a free market economy. There's nothing free market about that industrial zone out there. This is taxpayer-financed sprawl. To me, it looks very corrupt when you take money away from poor people and give it to rich people. That's my perspective.
Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, I will go to Mayor Mattson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Chair. I just want to remind everybody, this, this company coming from outside of Iowa had 130 places they looked at and chose Davenport after a considerable search, and it's one of the largest minority-owned businesses in the nation. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. All right, that item will move on. Item number four is a motion approving the annual action plan for year 50 for the CDBG and home programs and authorizing the interim city administrator or her designees to sign necessary documents and agreements. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, anything from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on, and I would entertain a motion to move all items to the consent agenda. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule VI speed limits of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding 49th Street from Fairmont Street. Iowa by adding 49th Street from Fairmont Street to Pine Street as 35 miles per hour street thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Please step to the podium, name, order, address, please.
Just a second, Ward. I would have to say I'm for this. Being a resident up in that specific area, I've seen so many accidents, so many fatalities. One, I have a personal mentality of my own, but honestly, that would be a better idea. That's a starting point, but there's more that needs to be done with that area.
Thank you. Next, please step up the podium, name, order, address, please.
Judith Lee. I'm looking at this one and the next one. One is to decrease and one is to increase the speed limit. And I guess I have a question, if you could help me get an answer for that, Alderman Jobson. Are we doing, because one of them says, "We're doing this because people are driving this speed, and so we're going to adjust it." That's what they're comfortable at. Are we doing this street by street as questions come up? Or is it time to take a look at the city of Davenport and the speed limits that we have as the city has grown and changed? And if you would help me find some answers to that, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Chair, anyone else from public wishing to comment on this item? Before I turn it over to council, I was wondering if I have any member from staff that would be able to come and answer that question regarding how we are addressing speed limits?
Brian Shad, City Engineer. It is somewhat unusual to come through and change speed limit. These two were identified through existing traffic, through experience. We went ahead and read the studies, and they indicated what really is a more proper speed for these. This is not something we typically go street by street, but we do constantly have traffic engineering out there. We look at speed complaints, we look at accidents throughout the city. We are continually looking at these.
Thank you. Therefore, turn it over. Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, first consideration ordinance amending Schedule VI speed limits of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding 60th Street from Wisconsin Avenue to Fairmont Street as a 35 mile per hour street thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, first consideration ordinance amending Schedule XI Resident Parking Only of Chapter 10.96 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Spalding Boulevard along the fringe of 707 and 708 Spalding Boulevard thereto. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And then item number four, resolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I will read each of these before asking for a comment. First, city of Davenport, red, white, and boom. Leclerc Park, 400 Byderbeck Drive, 2 p.m. to 11 p.m. Wednesday, July 3, 2024. Closure starting at 2 p.m. Marquette, Gaines, Ripley, and Harrison Streets, south of West River Drive, starting at approximately 7 p.m. Marquette Street, Myrtle Street, Warren Street, Western Avenue, Scott Street, Ripley Street, and Main Street from West River Drive to West Second Street. Next, Leanne Mendez, Mendez Block Party, 6918 Wilkes Avenue, 8 a.m. to 11 p.m. Thursday, July 4, 2024. Closure, Wilkes Avenue from West 69th Street to West 70th Street. Next, Tim Shea, Belcourt, 4th of July Party, 8:30 p.m. to 11 p.m. Thursday, July 4, 2024. Closure, Belcourt from East 61st Street to Parkview Lane. And last, Davenport Parks and Recreation Youth Fest, Vedderberry Park, 1800 West 12th Street, 6:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Wednesday, July 10, 2024. Closure, Park Road from the intersection of Wilkes Avenue and West 12th Street to north of the Aquatic Center parking lot. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none there, that item will move on. Item number five, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Southeast Little League End of Season Celebration Prairie Heights Park, 5600 Eastern Avenue, 10 to 15 minutes or less between 8:45 p.m. and 9:30 p.m. on Friday, June 28, 2024. Fireworks over 50 dB. And next, Tim Shea, Belcourt, 4th of July Party, 8:30 p.m. to 11 p.m. Thursday, July 4, 2024. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, we have Hickory Creek Event Center, 3504 Hickory Grove Road, permanent outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Figgy Art Museum, 225 West Second Street, new owners/license with outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Palmer College of Chiropractic, 1,000/1,005 North Brady Street, temporary event with outdoor area, license type Special Class C Beer Wine on premises. Next, Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen, 831 West Third Street, permanent extended outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Dollar General Store, number 3,700, or 30700, 1777 North Division Street, license type Class B Beer/Wine Carryout. And then last, Kobe Sushi and Ibachi LLC, 5242 Elmore Avenue, license type Class C liquor on premises. And then there are those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read, but are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Please step to the podium, name, order, address, and then the item, please.
Gary Eklund, and I'll be really fast here. I just couldn't help but notice that the Figgy Art Museum, what was once the Davenport Art Museum, has a new owner, which I think must be some kind of a clerical error or something to do with the liquor license or what. But it says Figgy Art Museum, Figgy Art Museum, new owners license. And if the Figgy Art Museum has changed legal ownership, it's news to me. So there must be something else with this little thing here, because I know it used to be the Davenport Art Museum, and we gave it away to whatever we gave it away to. But I don't think it really has new owners. I think it still has the whatever it is that owns it. But just something I couldn't help but note there.
Anyone else? Before we go to council, I'm just going to take a little privilege here, because there's a couple of items that I'm going to request, actually, that'd be placed on discussion agenda. They are the two items for Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen under Section A and Section B. I recently learned of, I think, an incident over there that may have happened. I was curious if a member from our police department can come up and provide any information, see if we address this facility like we have with some of our other facilities in town.
So Jamie Brown, Major for the Police Department. City's process, obviously. We reviewed the calls for service for Yoshi's during a time period when this became, during that time, we did see slightly higher calls for service there than other downtown establishments, but nothing that raised to the level of public safety nuisance or concerns. Therefore, that review was completed and then forwarded on to staff. As you're aware, about a week ago, we had a shooting down there. It's currently an open investigation, so I can't really provide a lot of details at this time, but we do have an open investigation for a shooting that took place down there with a victim.
Thank you, Major. I would then just open up to any of my members, any of my colleagues from council. Any comment? Alderman Kelly.
Major Brown. Gotcha. So I know you can't say, you said, "So was the shooting Yoshi's or in the vicinity?" Because I was under the impression it was the vicinity.
Yeah, we were called down to Yoshi's Bar where the victim was.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's the victim. I'm asking about this. I'll wait till the investigation, because...
Yeah, there's not, I can't give you a whole lot of information.
Yep.
We're about a week into it, so I would say that relatively soon, we'd be able to provide you additional details.
For sure, and I understand the importance of that. So I'll just sit back and wait as well. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Anyone else? Major Brown, I apologize. Sorry. And then is it just correct that members of police department and potentially legal are just reaching out to the owner just to have a meeting, just to discuss some items and check in on some things? Is that correct? Is that happening?
Yes, so in past, when we've had incidents that take place like this, if there's a business that associated with it, we reach out to the owner to try to help them out with sage protocols or just to mitigate it so some things like this don't happen again. So if we get to that point and there's facts that are directed us in that area, then we would definitely do that for sure.
Cool, thank you. And hopefully, the owner's doing all the right things, and obviously, that's a tough business, so we thank them for their efforts. But I will request that just both of these be placed on discussion, just if we get any information in a week. Otherwise, seeing no one else, I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
Let's make a motion, put all items on public safety to the consent agenda, excluding both items dealing with Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen. I would like those to be put on discussion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn. The next area is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting the work completed under Hickory Grove Road and Central Park Avenue Reconstruction Project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $1,733,081.9. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the Blackhawk Creek and Walnut Creek Clearing and Grubbing Project by Arid Works LLC of Long Grove, Iowa, in the amount of $248,575. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $200,000 to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, for the 2023-2024 Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $150,000 to Klein Sewer and Drain LLC of Long Grove, Iowa, for the on-call sewer, televising, inspecting, and cleaning services. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the Southern Levy System Water Pollution Control Plant Flood Protection Project, Levy and Pump Station Phase 1 to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $13,947,499.16. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on.
Yep. Sorry. I have a question. I know that we received something. I would like more information on that before we vote on this next week, on the dollar amounts and everything for this, put this on discussion.
Sure. We'll leave that on, we'll leave that item on discussion, and then we'll have Public Works if it's brief over you next week. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the Colony Drive Western Avenue to Ripley Street Reconstruction Project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $411,964. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the River Center Ramp Interior Pedestrian Walkway Demolition and Upgrade Projects to Reconstruction LLC of Dewitt, Iowa, in the amount of $113,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward and name and word, please.
This was a busy agenda. This is another one that has not enough information in order to understand, for the public, anyway, maybe you folks have it, but we don't, what this project actually is. If you, Alderman Dunn, if you would ask somebody, does this involve completely demolishing the walkway between the Adler and the River Center? How long will it take? What is going to be done? It's just, it's talking about a demolition for the enclosed walkway, and that's a really important way for people to get between the parking garage and the River Center. And without that, especially with winter or whatever, that's going to be a problem. So I'd like to know the schedule, and I'd like to know what's going to be done, and what actually this project involves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we have staff give us an update on that one probably next week? Are you going to be prepared to do it now, or you can wait till next week if you want?
Bridge House Mall Development Neighborhood Services. The walkway we're talking about is if you picture Level P2 of the River Center ramp, there's a enclosed walkway with glass walls, heaters, and then that extends over to the DoubleTree. Some of the systems in there have become unfunctional. It's not welcoming anymore. Our plan is remove the glass partition walls, but still keep the knee wall safety up for a safe walkway to get from the DoubleTree Hotel over to the Event Center, putting in new flooring, lighting, and everything like that for the public. It still remains safe, but keep some of that maintenance cost down and replace some of the stuff that's aged.
Thank you. Anyone, council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West Third Street to West Fourth Street Telegraph Road to Fillmore Street Traffic Signal Upgrades. And before I ask for public comment, do we have someone from staff that can give us an overview of this project?
A lot of all of our downtown traffic signals are all about the same vintage. They're well past their useful life. We're starting to have issues with interconnectivity, keeping traffic flowing and such. Those just don't want to talk to each other anymore. We also know we have issues with wiring, conduit, other parts and pieces, really. So this project is going to focus on all signals from Fillmore to Telegraph. This is a separate project. There's no need to put it in with the DOT bidding and also the additional paperwork. In all honesty, this is more of a local letting project, so we want to get in ahead of the Third and Fourth Street resurfacing, so we don't have to tear that back up when it's all said and done. This was presented as a separate project in the 2025 CIP.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Third Street Telegraph Road to Harrison Street Rehabilitation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward and name, word, please.
Lee, second ward. Again, I'm asking you to withdraw this until we can make the legal notice consistent with the agenda, or the agenda consistent with the legal notice, because this really cannot be voted on legally tonight, because it does not match the legal requirements of public notification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could we get a legal opinion for next week on that? If we could, then we'll leave that one on discussion. Thank you. Anyone from council? Alderman Newton.
I was just going to ask the same thing, that that item be put on discussion until we have an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I did see that in the paper, and it did say East River Drive. So if it's different on our agenda to what the legal notices in the paper, I think this just needs to go on discussion until we can talk about it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the East High Street and Forest Street Forest Road Storm Sewer realignment project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It's good to see this one going. I want to thank staff for continuing to shepherd this through, and I know there's, you know, some other items that'll have to still be buttoned up after, after all the work's done with some of the neighbors. So I appreciate continuing to see it through even after the work's done. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Blackhawk Creek Gate Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution of acceptance covering the assessment for the FY 2024 Commercial Alley Program in accordance with the Alley Cost Share Program.[1781.04] Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Eighth Ward. You have a lot of furious constituents. Our streets are falling apart, our alleys are falling apart, our property taxes got raised, and now you want people to pay their hard-earned money to help make alleys better. That should be a city project to where we can drive up and down our cities, streets, or alleys without our cars bottoming out, and not have to be charged more money to have that done. We all pay our taxes, and it just does not seem fair that you guys want to keep going after hard-working citizens because our city can't get it together and do these things. I know plenty of people who said they are not going to do this because they don't feel that we should have to pay for this. We have got a lot of corruption going on in our city, we have got a lot of non-transparency going on, there's no accountability going on in this city, and now you guys want to tax our people even more money just to fix alleys when we can't drive down the street, so people have to use their alleys, and now they can't use their alleys either. Are you guys just trying to make our city implode because you just want to keep taxing the heck out of people, putting more stress on people to get stuff done? We've got to get this fixed without making it harder for the people of our city. Otherwise, our children and our grandchildren have no hope in this city, because everything is just going to hell in a handbasket, so to speak. So I really hope you guys figure this out. I hope we don't keep adding more stress to people who are working so hard, because we love our city, we want our city back to being something we can be proud of, not just the riverfront, not just up above the hill. The West End just had their only store closed, and all the streets down there are just horrible. And then you come up the hill, and it's not getting much better. But the main ones that take you to all the expensive places, those are great. I mean, those are something to look at, but who's going to drive out of their way just to look at a street? We just want to drive to and from where we need to go without tires being popped, without having to worry about the street collapsing in. We just got to do something. I ask that you just do something to help our people somehow, some way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number 13 is a motion approving change order number one in the amount of $70,912 to AmeriCore LLC of Bluegrass, Iowa, for the 2024 Pedestrian Curb Ramp and Retrofit Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number 14 is a motion awarding a contract for the CY 2024 Sidewalk Program to C2 Creative Concrete of DeKalb, Illinois, in amount not to exceed $80,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number 15 is a motion awarding a contract for the Architectural and Engineering Services for the Main Street Landing Enhanced Lighting Project to Sasaki Associates of Denver, Colorado, in amount not to exceed $67,500. And before I ask public comment, can we have Mr. Mayor come up here and give us a overview of what this project actually is and the cost thing?
So Clay Merritt Engineering Capital Projects. Uh, so this is a smaller component of the larger Main Street Landing Project, which is, that larger project is funded with our ARPA funding and our, um, and the Destination Iowa grant that we received from the state. In this particular piece, um, we submitted grants to both RDA and SCRA last fall, um, see if they wanted to, um, contribute to our larger project, and they were both very interested in doing so, and so they both awarded the city, um, grants for this particular component. So what's in front of you is the design of this item. Um, there is no, um, you know, city capital, um, cost involved in this, so it's 100% paid for both RDA and SCRA, and then once, if, moving forward, it'll get folded into the, the larger, uh, Destination Iowa project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, I'll open it up to public.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. This is another example, another egregious example of not enough information for the public. Again, I don't know what you folks got, but looking at, looking at what's in the background, and even what you just said, uh, Mr. Merritt, you didn't say what this project is. I'm guessing, and I would like to get some more information on it, I'm guessing that it's the lighting of the Figgy, but I'm not sure. Um, and if you look at the subject, it says, and the Enhanced Lighting Project to Sasaki Associates, and there's nothing else out there except two signs, not to exceed $67,500. But then if you look in the background, we've got almost a million dollars in money from other organizations. Great. Says there's no city cost associated. This is another project, just like the two-way and the lights and the rehab and the underground stuff, that's been sliced and diced to almost, you cannot recognize it anymore. The whole Main Street Landing with funding from ARPA, CP, these other folks, money from Figgy thrown in, because they've been doing their own, uh, fundraising for their lights, um, there's no way to know what is going on here. And I'm going to ask the city administrator and her staff to please start providing more information to the public. You folks get it. It's not that hard to put it as background information on your agendas. Just like with my other comments, this city administrator is not acceptable. Um, you know, and please, I am addressing this because I do not have, do not argue with me, and please don't bully. I do not have enough information to contact, to, to comment on this with information, and I'm asking for more as we're moving forward. And if you would please ask again, um, Mr. Merritt, to come up and explain what component of what project of what component you're actually talking about here, and then please put it on the discussion. Thank you.
Anyone? How about we leave that one on discussion, and I'll have him get up next week and give us a total explanation of what's going on there? How's that?
That would be helpful. I want to hear, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, we don't dialogue, yeah. Thank you, you're done.
Anyone else?
Gary, Gary Eklund, I'll be, I'll be fast. Um, this mentions the Main Street Landing, and, uh, I think there's a Main Street Landing project that I've heard about that's going to be like this big giant boat ramp, so that wealthy people, when they come back from spending the winter in Florida, can go down to the river and put their boats in directly, instead of using the existing facilities. And, um, I don't know whether, it says Main Street Landing, I thought that was the title they gave to the boat ramp for the Rich People Project. I don't think we should spend this money. Like I said, she, she mentioned, you know, you don't really even know what it means. It's called the Main Street Landing Enhanced Lighting Project. And, uh, personally, I'm one of those people, you know, I'm an environmentalist, and, uh, I've been a lot opposed to a long time to wasteful lighting that doesn't really help anything. You know, it's one thing if you have lights in your backyard to protect your safety, you want that, but you don't necessarily want a light, and you know, if a dark parking lot that people are using in the middle of the night, it helps to have lights there, but to have lights on the bridge for no reason, or to like, light up the Figgy at night with a million dollars worth of lights, where, you know, you can see the Figgy in daylight and however much you can see it at night, so, you know, if this is money to light up the Figgy, it's a waste of money. You know, you might as well just take it and give it to people who are being evicted from their houses, you know, you spend it on something useful. Rebuild the old working man's bathhouse. The space is there, we could rebuild, I'm sure they have the plans and specifications, or at least enough photographs that they could do it, they could take this money that they're spending on lighting and, and the Main Street Landing and rebuild the working man's bathhouse. But whatever this is, I'm opposed to it, and, uh, lighting up something to waste money with electricity and lights, you know, you want your backyard to be lit up when you're outside in the dark, but spending money to light up the Figgy is a waste.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from counsel? Alderman Gripp?
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. Sorry, I'm a little slow.
No problem. Go ahead.
Uh, I'd just like to see, uh, have Sasaki, uh, give us, uh, product that they were supposed to give us for the $750,000 we gave them two years ago. We haven't got that yet, so, uh, before we give them any more money, why don't we see if we can get that product from them?
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, Alderman Gripp?
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Dunn. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the RDA and the SCRA for, um, their contributions to, uh, Main Street Landing, and, and this is not, uh, for lighting the Figgy, this is a, uh, component of the actual, uh, Main Street Park. 187,000 from SCRA and 375,000 from RDA. These are significant, uh, grants, uh, from these folks, and it, and it shows the, uh, greater support of this project, uh, from people, and, uh, the understanding that this is going to be a, a game changer for our riverfront, uh, in our downtown area. After, after COVID, um, casino revenues have, have been up, and, and one of the, the things that we've seen because of that is that the SCRA and the RDA have started to give, uh, bigger, bigger grants, uh, within the community. Bettendorf received a larger grant for their, uh, water park, uh, this is, uh, a large grant, and then, um, uh, the Figgy is also receiving a, a larger grant from the RDA and SCRA. So that's one of the, the benefits of COVID, is people started to gamble more, and some of this revenue is, is coming back to the, to cities and nonprofits, uh, in a, in a good way. So, um, very thankful for those two organizations and for their contributions to the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number 16 is a motion awarding a two-year contract with an optional one-year extension for traffic signal maintenance to Davenport Electric Contract of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. And item number 17 is a motion considering a waiver of sidewalk installation along Granite Way and Hillendale Road, and the waiver is valid as long as certain conditions remain in effect. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward. Name and word.
Cheryl Shagna, Third Ward. And basically, number 17 could not get more ambiguous than it is written there right now. We have no idea what sections of Hillendale or Granite Way in terms of the blocks, and as long as certain conditions remain in effect, who is going to monitor those conditions to ensure that they remain in effect? Sounds like a whole lot of hassle. Also sounds like it could be a safety issue when you don't have a sidewalk, when you have a sidewalk before and you have a sidewalk after. And since there's not enough information in here, I can't be sure on that, but it just seems like it could end up being a huge safety issue. I have to wonder if the neighbors were consulted as well, and, um, was it a matter that the road was widened so wide that now you cannot install a sidewalk? Um, and that can become a safety issue as well for walkers and people on bicycles.
Anyone else? Counsel? Alderman Gripp?
Yep, I just, uh, wanted to give some historical context on this, um, based on what's in our agenda packet here. Um, this is a waiver, uh, coming from the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center, and historically, over the 20 years of development, the city of Davenport has granted sidewalk waivers, uh, to the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center on the premise that, uh, we don't have, uh, a lot of pedestrians up there, it's not a safe place for pedestrian, the, the main, uh, traffic up there is 18-wheel, uh, truck traffic, and so it's, uh, very typical that when a new business comes into the industrial park that they, uh, ask for a waiver, and, um, we see these pretty routinely because we've seen a lot of, uh, investment up in the industrial park. Now, the, there is a point that the, the city always reserves the right to go back and order in sidewalks, um, but to this point, uh, the, the city council has typically granted the waiver, and there really hasn't been a, a push to order in sidewalks in the industrial park for the reasons I talked about. And, uh, there is a waiver request letter, uh, in your packet agenda that, uh, clearly states, uh, where the, the waiver is, um, specifically determined to. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you, sir. I would like to make a motion to move all items except for five, eight, nine, and 15 to the consent agenda.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next series is Finance. Alderwoman Newton, uh, will discuss. Alderman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight I will have Alderwoman Burkholder help me with the finance agenda. We have two items tonight. The first, resolution approving the renewal of general and auto liability, property, and workers' compensation insurance with multiple insurance companies and related professional services for FY 2025 in the amount of $2,242,433, in accordance with the attached schedule of insurance in force, approving the renewal of workers' compensation insurance with Midwest Employers Casualty Company and related professional services for FY 2026 in the amount of $188,969, and authorizing the Human Resource Director to execute any related documents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please state your name, address, or word.
Gary Eklund, uh, whatever word. Um, I, um, want to speak in opposition to this, and I know it's going to get, go through, but, uh, um, as you know, I've been juggling not going homeless, but one of the things that I had wanted to do, maybe one of my first, um, FOI requests, if, if, if you don't choose to ask, maybe you would, um, I've had a question for a while now about how many city employees drive vehicles home at night, and what possible justification there is for some of those employees being allowed to drive vehicles home at night?
Mr. Eklund, please stick to the actual agenda item, which is the renewal of insurance.
This says auto liability, resolution approving the renewal of general and auto liability. So part of the cost of this is we are paying for automobile liability for these people to drive in their vehicles to their houses, many of which are not even in Davenport. So I don't know how much lower this bill would be if, are there 20 people driving vehicles home, 30 people driving vehicles home, 100, 200 people? And why are they driving vehicles home to Bettendorf? Why are they driving vehicles home at all? You know, I understand if you, um, if you have a CPR, I'm going to say a CPR machine, you know, if you have a piece of machinery that they need, you may need to get up at 3:00 AM and run to an emergency and save somebody's life because you have this piece of machinery at your house, that's a good reason for having a vehicle. I can't, I don't know that it's a realistic example, but there may be some people who are justified in driving a vehicle home because you expect them to get up at 3:00 AM and run to something, and they have a piece of machinery. But in the private sector, for most of us, if we have to drive our vehicle 20 miles on Wednesday, we drive our vehicles, and maybe if you work somewhere, they send you a check for, you know, 20 miles times the federal, you know, 56 cents per mile standard or whatever it is. But there may be 100 or 200 or 300 people, or maybe it's only 25, but there's a whole lot of city employees who are driving vehicles home at night, and we're paying for their gasoline, and we're paying for their insurance, and we're paying for their car repairs and their maintenance, and that's a lot of money that we're paying. And I'm asking you to ask the city by next week to put this on the discussion agenda, and by next week to provide a list of every single city employee who drives a vehicle home at night, what their job title is, and written explanation of why they're being given a car. I think it's being used as a perk to favorite employees where like, okay, we can only pay you 100,000, but we can give you a city car, and the city will pay your gas and your repairs and your auto insurance. If you drive your vehicle to Bettendorf, and then you go to the grocery store on Sunday, you should be paying your own car insurance. People in the city of Davenport shouldn't be paying your car insurance, they shouldn't be paying for your gasoline, you know? Nobody's paying for my gasoline on Sunday, no one else is paying for my car insurance. So I, I would ask that you, um, I know you're going to vote for this because you need to have insurance, you know, but I, before you, before you, um, before you, um, approve this, I would really ask that you take this opportunity to, to demand city staff give you a written list of which employees drive vehicles home at night and why. Because I think we could snap our fingers next week by, and say, okay, you've had a city vehicle, you've had city insurance, you've had city repairs and maintenance, city gas for your grocery store trips, but we're taking that away. And there's 100 more vehicles that we could maybe put up for sale, or we could use in the rotation or whatever, but I think the city workers that I know of who are driving vehicles home at night have no excuse whatsoever for driving a city vehicle home at night, and that's just a financial perk that they don't deserve, and I'm calling on you, as Alderwoman at large, to demand accountability and an explanation. I'm, I'm guessing, maybe you do, maybe you don't, and I'm not asking you as a question, I don't, we don't do back and forth, but do you have any idea how many city employees drive vehicles home? But do you have any idea how many city employees drive vehicles home at night and, and why? You know, I just don't think that we should say, I like Bob and I like Jennifer, and I wish I could pay them $150,000, but I can't. But I can give them a city car. I can make the city taxpayers pay for their insurance and their gasoline. It's just ridiculous. So before you approve this, I hope you keep it on the discussion agenda, and I hope you'll take this opportunity. I wanted to do this in January. I wanted to come down in January with a, with a written note and say, please request a list of every city employee who drives a vehicle home at night and why. And I've been too busy to do that, but this is the opportunity. Please ask the city administrator to provide you a written list of every single person who drives a vehicle home at night and why, because we could save a lot of money. We don't need to be paying their, their auto insurance for what they're doing on Sunday afternoon.
Is there anyone else from the public? Is there anyone from counsel? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you for the time to speak. I would have to say I don't think I have such a high demand, but I would like to know because there's a bunch of employees that live in my neighborhood that I see cars in my neighborhood every day, all day, night and day, overnight. So I guess there's importance, but I would just like to know a little more feedback on that for the folks that drive vehicles home.
Anyone else from counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. Moving on to the second item. Motion awarding a two-year contract for license plate recognition, so LPR, infrastructure to insight public sector of Chandler, Arizona in the amount of $65,550 using Omni Partners Contract 23-6692-03. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? If so, please state your name, address, or ward.
Gary Eckland, I apologize for getting up. I just, there's a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight that kind of is curious. If I understand correctly, this is probably something that's going to the police department, maybe a license plate reader. For people who don't understand what that is, I believe that you place it on, you know, Brady Street or the Centennial Bridge, and it reads a license plate, and it tells you the name of the vehicle owner so that, say, if I'm wanting to bring Benjamin Crump to town as soon, hopefully of a famous civil rights lawyer. And if he had a vehicle in his name and he drove in and the license plate reader said, you know, Benjamin Crump in Davenport, and our, if Jasmine Newton, I'm sorry, you know, like if you, and I know this is how we've gotten where, you know, like cities want to micro surveil everything, but it's sort of like, I don't know that the city really needs to know the names of every individual who comes in and out of the city. Like I said, I, I know that you're probably going to do this one, too, and I know like if you drive into this or that city, they can go, okay, you know, Jennifer Smith just drove in, and then she's followed by Bob Smith, and then we, you know, Benjamin Crump got here at 11:15. But I just don't know that we really need to have this micro surveillance. It's sort of like if a, if a car drives in at 120 miles an hour, you want to pull it over. But I don't think you really need to know that I succeeded in getting Benjamin Crump to come to town. That's still my dream, but we'll see what happens. Like I said, I just don't, I really don't know. I'm assuming it's going to go on, you know, one of the entries into town, River Drive or Locust or Brady or something. But I just, it's a, it's a level of surveillance that doesn't really make sense to me, even though I know it's really common across the country now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Is there anyone from counsel wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I would ask Alderwoman Burkholder to set the agenda and place this on the consent.
Thank you. I motion to move both items on the finance agenda to the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. With that, I yield the floor back to me, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton, Alderwoman Burkholder. Next area, ordinances, resolutions, and motions. There are none. Any reports? There are none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good weekend.